Regularly scheduled meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. It is Tuesday, May 4th, 6:00. We are holding the meeting via Zoom. And we have a full quorum. And we will start. The meeting is called to order and we'll start with a moment of silence. Thank you. And next up is Planning Commissioner announcements. Do we have any announcements? Seeing a bunch of head shakes, okay. We will now open the public comment period for items which are not on the agenda. Or if you'd like to address the agenda items and you can't stay till later, you could do that now. And can we put a link up on the screen, Scott? For you can participate via Zoom or with a phone call. Thank you. And Anthony, do you see anybody in the queue for public comment?
Yes, thank you Chair. I do see one hand raised in the queue. Hope and Tish is what I see there. And I have unmuted.
Welcome. You may share your comments.
I'm trying to unmute. They have raised here. Are you there, Hope and Tish?
Oh my gosh.
There we go.
Okay, I raised my hand. And I haven't been on very many Zoom calls. So I raised my hand just to show that I was here. Didn't mean to get into this part. I'll be.
Okay. Thank you for being out there. It's nice to know somebody's listening. All right. If you'd like to share later, you'll have an opportunity.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, Anthony?
Thank you Chair. No, I do not see any raised hands.
All right. Let's come back to the meeting then. Do we have any presentations? I don't think we're starting with presentations. We're ending with a presentation. So we'll move on to the consent calendar. We have two items. The current and advanced planning processing list and our minutes from March 2nd. Do we need to pull either of those items? For discussion, comments. Everybody's happy. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have Bill and a second.
I'm sorry.
Okay, Joe is the second. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Let's do a roll call vote.
Vice Chair Rochen.
Yes.
Commissioner Graffia.
Yes.
Commissioner Ford.
Yes.
Chair Person Stewart.
Yes.
Motion passes for zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to public hearings. First one is B1. Case number CUP 21-02/PKG 21-01. Location is 939 Pacific Street in Morro Bay. And it looks like we have our planning intern, Abigail Miramontes, presenting.
Yes, I can go ahead and turn my screen.
Thank you.
Okay, can everyone see?
Yep.
All right. So we have CUP 21-02 and PKG 21-01 for 939 Pacific Street. This is a proposed first and second story addition to an existing residence. The applicant is Eric Westbrook and the agent is Erin Ginnage. The zoning of this property is R1. And this is the existing site. It is a single-story home with a one-car garage. And it is located just within the R1 zone and outside of the postal commission appeal jurisdiction. The existing home is 868 square feet. And it has a 294-square-foot attached garage. The proposed addition includes 347 square feet added onto the first floor in the rear of the property and a 470-square-foot second-story addition as well. It also includes 100 square feet of first-floor decking and 255 square feet of decking on the second floor. The project meets all of the zoning ordinance standards except for parking, where it has a one-car garage and a two-car garage is what is required. The only changes in any of the setbacks are to the rear. And it's still a 25-foot, 1-inch proposed setback where 10 feet is required. As I mentioned before, the nonconforming item is the garage. The parking requires a two-car garage that is 20 feet by 20 feet. And the existing garage is 11 foot, 8 inches by 23 feet, 2 inches. There is an additional uncovered and unenclosed parking space in the driveway. The parking exception would not constitute a grant of special privilege or be dissimilar to parking limitations on other sites in the area. The parking situation is not proposed to change from the existing conditions. It is just the one-car garage with one spot in the driveway. The exception will not adversely affect the health, safety, or general welfare. This is just in addition to a single-family home. There's no new units proposed or anything like that. And the exception is reasonably necessary for the applicant's full enjoyment of their property and is similar to those uses on the adjoining properties. This is the site plan. The existing home and the existing garage are shown here with the parking in the driveway. And then the proposed addition would be in the rear of the lot. And we can see it highlighted, kind of that dark mustard yellow color. These are the proposed home elevations. You can see here that the second-story addition is in the rear half of the property. And the front of the home will remain the same. And all the work would be done in the back half and on that second story. This is the photo simulation for the proposed project. The second-story addition, you can see here, is in the back. And there is a neighboring second-story home directly adjacent to this property, that kind of pink color house. The proposed project meets all of the design guidelines for the residential design guidelines. Its relationship to the existing homes is similar. There are single-story and two-story homes in the neighborhood. The scale and mass is also similar to these homes. And that second story is focused on the back half of the property. The surface articulation and building orientation are not really proposed to change. And the addition will match the existing home colors and materials. The garage driveway in design is not proposed to change. It will remain a one-car garage with that one spot in the driveway. And the building materials and architectural elements, as I said before, will be similar to what the existing home has. So staff recommendation is to adopt Planning Commission Resolution 09-21, which includes the findings and conditions of approval for CUP 21-02 and PKG 21-01 for the proposed development at 939 Pacific Street.
Thank you for that presentation. Does anybody have any questions for staff? Mr. Rochen.
Thank you Susan. Abby, Scott, is there anything you can speak to that would put us in the current state of the city relative to parking policy? Are there any issues in the new zoning code, the proposed zoning code, that we might want to consider relative to the parking issue?
It's a good question, Commissioner Rochen. So the draft zoning code, and some of you will recall this, includes a change to how we deal with parking in our single-family residential neighborhoods and removes the garage requirement. So it still requires the two cars that you would normally have, but it just eliminates the garage requirement for a couple of reasons. You know, garages oftentimes are filled with, used for storage purposes. And then now with this change in state law, a lot of them are being converted to ADUs. So instead of having to convert your existing garage to that, then it's better just to design that holistically into the home. And so the discussion that formed by the Planning Commission when the policy was amended or revised kind of centered on those two items as a way to have a more modern code that reflects kind of how things are developing now, how single-family homes are developing now.
Thank you guys. Thank you Madam Chair.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, so Jen, you're okay. And Joe, okay. All right. We should open up for public comment then. Do we have anybody in the queue, Anthony?
We have representatives. We have both Eric Westbrook and Erin, I forgot her last name, who is the agent for the project there. So I would imagine one of them may want to speak first.
Sounds good.
All right. Looks like Erin has raised his hand. I'm going to go ahead and unmute him. Okay, Erin, you are unmuted.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Yeah, good evening. And yeah, pretty straightforward addition to a residence. Definitely try to keep the, there's a lot of in Morro Bay, a lot of beach bungalow houses that have 1950s, single-car garage, that aesthetic to the front first-floor area of the residence. And do the addition for both financial reasons and for view purposes on the rear to get a nice view of the lot and still fit in within the neighborhood. And somewhat taking in consideration, the neighbor, two-story neighbor, has a little bit of a view over the single-story area. So all those things were considered in the design. And the parking exception is nice and works with this. Like I said, a lot of Morro Bay has a single-car garage, was built in 1950s. And in order to get a two-car garage on this property, you'd have to demolish the existing structure. It's right now five foot on either side to the setback. So it would be a significant project to take to just try to get a two-car garage in there. So yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else in the queue for public comment?
Thank you. No, I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Okay, thank you. And we'll close public comment, come back for discussion. We did, of course, get in our packet, a letter from Mr. Mike Wilson concerned about the two-car garage issue. He says that he was required to have one. It was probably something before, you know, we had more recent discussions and all about how many garages a place needs to have or not have. So just to note his objections there. Do we have any discussion among commissioners? Anybody want to go first? Everybody's quiet? Okay, Bill, looks like you unmuted.
Sure, sure. I guess my comments are it's a really simple project. The drawings show that it's very well done. I want to applaud the designers. I think they did a nice job. I like the fact that the additions in the back. And I think Abby's staff report is right on. So I'm prepared to make a motion to approve staff's recommendations whenever we're done with discussion.
Thanks, Bill. Anybody else? Joe?
Essentially the same thing. The structure would have to be completely reworked to afford another garage. And it's one of those places where the right-of-way hasn't been taken up by a garden project. So there's adequate parking, you know, street-side. It's unobtrusive and matches the community. I think it's a fine addition. I have no problem with it.
Okay, and I see Jen nodding. Did you want to add anything, Jen?
It was all perfectly said. I think that, you know, looking at the plans with the extension of the driveway over, it seems that there's probably even enough parking for someone to park there and still get into, access the garage. So I think it looks beautiful. And yeah, I really enjoyed looking at the plans.
Thank you. I agree. I like this trend we're seeing towards having the extensions in the second story going in the back. So you still get that lower profile in the front. I walked by, I think you could actually park two cars side by side in that driveway, never mind on that, you know, the front berm area. I've certainly seen a lot of places where, you know, people are parking six to eight cars on one lot. That's pretty horrendous. But you know, that's not under our purview. And hopefully folks will be good neighbors with each other and park on their properties. One question I had, Scott, as we move forward, will we need to do these parking exceptions when we have our new general plan certified since we've kind of changed that requirement? Do we have, Scott? There he is.
Just help me unmute. The draft zoning code, we sort of changed the policies in there to, so that you have a lot fewer of these things that will come before you that are small additions that are existing, nonconforming, that type of thing. Sort of recognizing that they're okay. It's not a problem. They're older homes. And then we have the new parking policy related to garages for new construction. And we do have the exception, you know, policies in the new code as well that are slightly different. But you still would be able to ask for something similar if there was some constraint in a lot that prohibited you from sort of complying, I guess.
Okay. All right. Well, I am ready to entertain a motion. Sounded like Bill was ready to.
Happy to go. Thank you, Madam Chair. I still move to accept staff's recommendations.
Do we have a second? And Jen is our second. Thank you, Jen. All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call vote.
Vice Chair Rochen.
Yes.
Commissioner Ford.
Yes.
Commissioner Graffia.
Yes.
Chair Stewart.
Yes.
Motion passes for zero. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to public hearing B2. This is a request for a time extension of coastal development permit, number CPO-404, and conditional use permit, number UPO-364. These are for the Sonic Drive-Thru Restaurant at the corner of Main Street and Highway 41. And we have Cindy Jason on this one.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the commission. Good to be here. I'm going to share my screen right now. I can do this successfully. Okay, bear with me here. Can you see the screen?
We can see you. I saw the screen a minute ago and then it went away. But you're lovely and you have a big backdrop. This is enjoyable too.
This is what I get for not testing out the screen share before the meeting. Okay, one more time.
So there you go. We've got that.
Ah, okay. So this is, as you said, it is a time extension request for the Sonic Restaurant planning permit. It was approved by Planning Commission in 2017, April of 2017. There we go. And you can see it, correct? Still working? Okay, good. What was approved by the Planning Commission in 2017 was new construction on a vacant lot, approximately 1,400-square-foot drive-through Sonic Restaurant. And as I said, that project was approved in 2017. Our municipal code allows for two one-year administrative extensions by the Planning Commission. And those were authorized in, sorry, here a second, 2019 and 2020. Further extensions after the two-year extensions can only be approved by the Planning Commission. And I'm going to show you just a couple of slides here, just to refresh your memory. This is a site plan image that was, as it was, sorry, this is an image of the site. Excuse me. For some reason, my PowerPoint is on two different computer screens. So I'm a little distracted here. This is the site of 1840 Main. And this is what the visual simulation looked when it was approved in 2017. Here's the site plan as it was approved. The Sonic Restaurant is sited in the center of the lot. The applicant originally requested a one-year extension when staff first talked with them back in April before the permit expired. Staff's recommendation is that a two-year extension be granted. The applicant has experienced delays due to both the COVID pandemic and as well in regards to getting the building permit, plan check responses back to the city. They did apply for their building permit. Their current status is that they are in the process of responding to the city's plan check corrections. And with that two-year extension, then their permit would expire should the Planning Commission approve that in April of 2023. So staff's recommendation is for that extension. And that would be through adoption of Planning Commission Resolution 10-21. And that concludes my presentation. There is a representative from Cornerstone Engineering, which is the applicant or permanent's representative. And they are here as well if you have any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any questions for staff? And we probably need to stop the screen sharing so I can see. There we go. If anybody, that's okay. I saw Joe with his hand up.
Yeah, I was wondering, to date, have they done any of the preliminary research on the property, specifically the Native American relics? Is any of that stuff going on yet?
Yeah, so that was done during the planning review. There was a mitigated negative declaration that was adopted by the Planning Commission along with that. And so that incorporates environmental mitigations related to cultural resources. They will be required to have Native American and archaeological monitoring during any ground disturbance of the site. And so that is part of the project and part of planning staff evaluation that that's in place and that they submit a contract to be approved by planning staff prior to issuing some building permit.
They haven't done anything to disturb the soil yet, I think.
No, the site's been untouched since then, yeah.
Thanks, Joe. Anybody else have any questions for staff? Jen?
Yes, thank you Cindy for that presentation. I have a question about, I know that that intersection is definitely, you know, a hot topic right now. We're even discussing, you know, I think roundabouts or, you know, other types of traffic options. And I was reading through everything. And I noticed that it had said that the applicant will be required to pay for its share of improvements to the intersections of Main and State Route 1. And I'm just curious, as a newbie here, like what does that, you know, what does significant mean? Or, you know, or what is their share, I should say? And has anything changed because of the new developments in that whole, like, traffic area? Basically, has there been anything that's changed with that? And how can we really involve them? Because I know that that's going to be a nightmare if we don't get that taken care of soon with that type of a fast food chain there. So just any information about that would be great.
Yeah. So as part of the planning review, they did a traffic study. And it evaluated both pedestrian and vehicle traffic impacts. They did traffic counts at five nearby intersections. So it looked at existing and proposed traffic counts. And they evaluated that both weekday and week, and traffic counts to determine what the traffic impacts would be based on that particular use. And then that was incorporated as, you know, their condition of approval. And that's in the staff, the permit that you see there. So that will get addressed as what are their conditions that they need to satisfy prior to the building permit being issued. And so that's kind of, you know, basically on hold while they're working through the construction documents. As far as the roundabout, that project, as I understand it from Public Works, is not fully funded yet. And I think it has a significant funding shortage just because of the way that Caltrans has designed that. But that's basically where the status is. And I see Scott's turned his monitor on, so maybe he has additional information.
Yeah, we are working with SlowCog on funding options to fund the full roundabout improvement. I think we're at, I mean, last I heard, we were at 30% design on the design of it. Maybe it's now at 60. And I think it's under review at Caltrans, or at least it was last I heard. That might have changed more recently. So the city is moving forward with that. We're also looking at identifying our portion of what that cost would be. And SlowCog's looking at some other options for funding in addition to some other, some existing grant funding that's out there now. So we're hopeful that we will be able to build a roundabout. And as it relates to the traffic impact, it's really just, the impact fee is really just based on the percentage of the overall traffic volume that this project will throw into that intersection, which is very small compared to the overall amount of traffic that already goes through there. So that's kind of how the impact fee works. That's how you pay your fair share.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anybody else? I guess my main question, and I can present this to the applicant as well, is just, you know, how committed the company is to this project. It's been a number of extensions. And, you know, there are people who have been able to get projects off the ground and going. But this is a bigger corporation and they have lots of projects. So I'd like to hear about their commitment to this project in this town before we give them another two years for an empty lot to sit there. And then also whether we could ask them to do any sort of site improvements in the interim. And I know there are challenges in terms of ground disturbance. But it would be nice to do some weed clearing, something, it's an entrance to our community, something that makes it look a little more attractive. And possibly even some kind of signage that says, coming soon. You know, a Sonic restaurant, something that suggests it's just not another blighted, emptied lot. So whether, Cindy, you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I can respond to both of those comments. So and certainly to your first question, and the applicant's representative can elaborate. But the But the initial slowdown when they applied for their building permit, there was some delays working with PG&E in regards to getting three-phase power on the site. And that created quite a bit of a delay. I think what happened, and I spoke with their, with the senior engineer representative on the project today, they have since worked out those PG&E issues. I think also, you know, their unfortunate, misfortune is that, you know, I think when they resolved that PG&E issue is then the pandemic started. So, but yes. And then as far as the second, to your second question, the city did just recently start noticing today for a temporary use permit on the site. They have, in the interim, leased the site temporarily, and you'll probably see this on the next tracking log. The Morro Bay U-Haul and propane business use is temporarily requesting to basically set up shop there. No ground disturbance is proposed. The business would operate out of an office trailer, but they are proposing to, you know, clean up some of the vegetation. No removal of major vegetation is proposed, but it's to the authority that the director has to approve a six-month TUP on the site. The benefit of that is that it gives some life to the site. It, you know, they'll add, you know, the existing potted, you know, palm tree plants that they have at their existing site. And the reason that they're leaving their current location at the roundabout on Quintana is due to the city's water reclamation facility. So this was an opportunity for that business to not, you know, lose revenue during those times, so.
So it's just a temporary?
It is.
And then they will go back to their site on Quintana?
Right, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so we started the noticing for that. That would be a 10-day comment period, you know, and then, you know, that whole process. So at least that'll, you know, give it some, you know, life there.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that.
I would make one correction, that they probably won't go back to that location.
Really?
As the owner has plans to redevelop that site.
Ah, okay. Something new every day. All right, why don't we, any other questions at this point? Okay, let's open it up for public comment, and let's hear first from the applicant or their agent if they have anything to say.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm going to go ahead and unmute Melissa Snyder.
Thank you.
Okay, Melissa, you are unmuted.
Hi, thank you guys so much for having me today and reviewing this extension. We, as, I'll recap on a few things that Cindy said. There was a PG&E issue that has been resolved, which is why they're proceeding with building plans. And we did, we have also, when we originally did the site design, we were coordinating with Caltrans in regards to the roundabout and had taken that, hopefully, future roundabout into consideration with the site layout and design, and worked closely with them to make sure that it not only would work independently with the existing street layout, but would also work in the future with a roundabout layout. In terms of why they're requesting further extension, after PG&E, the issue was resolved, waiting for the architectural company to proceed with building plans and getting them up and running. I believe they had some personnel changes because of there was some significant time gap there. So getting the new person caught up and getting them working on it. The developer is also very concerned with the cost of construction supplies, and he's trying to focus on maintaining the businesses that he currently has open. He's having an issue with maintaining the employees and keeping the employees that he has for the businesses that he has open and running. So a mixture of kind of all of these items is the reason that he's asking for this two-year extension. As Cindy mentioned, the site will be used temporarily by U-Haul. That is going to be on a month-to-month lease, so that if, you know, the Sonic is ready to proceed, they don't have to wait a certain amount of time for their lease with U-Haul to be up if it happens before the... But from what Cindy said, it sounds like they're only going to be approved for a six-month term. The owner did say today in a conversation that I had with him that they are hoping to start construction next summer. So hopefully so, that would be great. I think that's all that I have to add, unless you guys have any additional questions.
Thank you, thank you, Melissa. Anybody have any questions for Melissa Snyder? Jen?
Thank you, Susan. Ms. Snyder, I may have missed it in the plans, but is there anything in the plans? I know this was done a while ago, so maybe even a new development. But, you know, we're in this era of going green and thinking forward and doing what we can to make the environment is, you know, to take care of our environment. Has Sonic taken any measures to do this where they, or you're, the person who owns this particular one, are they planning on doing any type of solar panels? Or any, anything that would give our community, you know, excitement to think about that they might be doing for, you know, to better our environment here at Morro Bay?
Sure, sure. Not that I'm aware of, but I have not been involved actively in this project for about two years, since we had our plant, since we had our civil plans approved. With the architect back into the building plans phase, they might have things in their plans that they have added. I just, I'm not aware of them, so I don't want to speak to anything incorrectly.
Thank you for clarifying, thank you.
Anybody else? Joe? No? And how about Bill? You got anything? Any questions? No? Okay. So Melissa, it sounds like the owner's still committed to this project, would like to get it started in summer, hoping to get it started by summer of 2022. And then in the interim, we have a potential lease with U-Haul.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Why don't we open it up, see if there's any other public comment on this? And then Melissa will sort of hold on to you in case anything else comes up, but let's see if there's anybody else in the queue. Anthony?
Oh, thank you, Chair. I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
All right. Boy, this is going to be a easy meeting today. So let's open it up for discussion. Who wants to kick off on this one? Oh, and we close public comment, remember to do that. Joe, what do you got?
Well, you know, I remember it was a complicated hearing that we had, and I think we touched on all the issues, or as much as our power, you know, would allow us to. I remember, you know, my primary, well, I had several concerns, but certainly the most important one was the added congestion to that intersection and the high school kids, you know, crossing a still more crowded intersection, paying attention to their cell phones instead of their own personal safety. But as I recall, I guess this is what Scott was alluding to, that the bulk of the expense of improving that intersection is going to fall to Morro Bay and not to Caltrans. And that's, you know, definitely a problem. But there wasn't, there wasn't any immediate solution to the issue of safety as far as I was concerned.
You know, I think you're the only one of us who was actually part of those hearings.
Yeah.
That was a while back, yeah.
We talked about, you know, the stress on the water, because I believe we were sort of in a drought condition at that time, and there was traffic. The Native American relics, the trees that, you know, might have had to come down. You know, it was comprehensive.
Joe, your screen just...
I didn't really have anything more to say, other than someday they actually do construct it.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I will say this, and we also paid a good deal of attention to sort of the particular design of this, because as I recall, the original design was one of the typical corporate design, and we made an effort to sort of tailor it a little bit more in keeping with the environment of Morro Bay.
That's good to hear, that's good to hear. Because I don't really, I would assume we, our goal is not to revisit the whole design issue. This is just whether we give them this extension or not. Yeah, appreciate that, Joe, thanks for that history. Bill, have you got anything?
I'd be ready to make a motion.
All right, let me check in one more time with Jen.
Okay.
I think this is, it's, yeah, we can go ahead and move forward. But I do want to thank you, Joe, because I did notice in the design, and I was looking at it, I thought, this doesn't look like what I, you know, I had in mind when I thought of a Sonic. And so, yeah, I really do appreciate that, and thank you for sharing that with us. So, yeah, I'm with Bill.
My original thought had been to, you know, well, let's just give them a year and get this project going, but it sounds like they're hoping to get it going basically a year from summer, which is, you know, within that two-year timeframe. And as Scott had said at one point earlier, it's easier on staff if they don't have to review it every year. So let's hear a motion.
Jen, why don't you make it?
Okay. All right, so, you know, I haven't made a motion here yet during this. Can I just do what Bill normally does and I just say? I like to make a motion to approve.
That's fine, to approve the two-year extension to coastal development permit, CPO 404, and conditional use permit, UPO 364.
Okay, so that's all I would have had to have said, okay. Do I need to repeat that, or are we good with what you just said?
So just to help you out with that, so what you basically would move is the staff recommendation in the staff report. So it's pretty short, and it's basically what Susan just read off. So nothing more complicated than that. Or you can simply do as Commissioner Roche did and just move staff recommendation, that's fine, too, because it's written down in the staff report, so.
Right.
On part of the record.
Okay, so that's, that's like the abridged version, okay.
I'd like to, Joe, for the history, and thanks, Cindy, for her staff report. Well done, and second.
All right, let's have the roll call vote. Is Cindy doing it, or is Scott doing it?
I'll do it.
All right.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Roche?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingraffia?
Yes.
Chairperson Stewart?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0, thank you.
All right, thank you, and thanks to Melissa Snyder for being here, too. So moving on to new business, we have an information session presentation, Tree Planting is Unique and Appropriate to Morro Bay. And Commissioner Roche put this together for us. So do you want to do more introductions, Bill?
Sure. So Anthony, I think we have our three speakers, our participants right now, that would be Hope Merkel, John Chestnut, and Mike Bush. And I think they're there, and if, Anthony, if we could actually see them during the presentation, that would be great.
Yes, Commissioner Roche, and I have put all of them over in the panelist section, so they are now able to use their cameras and free to speak whenever. You should see them on your queue, actually.
Terrific. So let me welcome Hope Merkel, John Chestnut, and Mike Bush, three local horticultural experts. We chose these experts because of their inspiring and plant-appropriate names, Hope, Chestnut, and Bush. But also, we chose them because they're local horticulturists with extraordinarily interesting resumes. The item that we're about to hear is a presentation on tree planting, Unique and Appropriate to Morro Bay, with a consideration for future planting guideline development. The presentation will include 30-minute sessions of question and answers, and then with a 15-minute question and answer from the commission following that. And I'd like to do a quick introduction of each one of the panelists, if I could. Hope Merkel is the manager of Los Osos Valley Nursery. Thank you for being here, Hope.
My pleasure.
She has been serving the Central Coast community of home gardeners and horticultural professionals for over 40 years. Her years of experience put her in the unique position to continue to serve the community by providing guidance in plant selection, soil amendment, and watering requirements. Next, I'd like to introduce Mike Bush. Mike, thank you so much for being here. Mike has been a lecturer in Horticultural and Crop Science at Cal Poly State University, has taught a variety of horticultural classes. He's worked in the botanical garden field for 40 years. Prior to Cal Poly, worked in a number of different public gardens. Interesting resume, Bermuda Botanical Gardens in Bermuda, Lotus Land in Santa Barbara, Gardens by the Bay, Singapore, and San Luis Obispo Botanical Gardens. And last, John Chestnut. Thank you, John, for being here. John is a consulting field botanist working on the California Central Coast in Sierra Nevada. He serves as rare plant coordinator for the San Luis Obispo chapter of the California Native Plant Society. He has volunteered for more than 20 years, leading a coastal dune restoration project with Los Osos middle school students. Plants grown by the students can be seen at the Audubon Sweet Springs Preserve. Thank you, guys, so much for making the time. The commission is excited to hear what you have to say. And if I could get it started, John, can I start with you? Would you be willing to kind of give us an overview? An idea in specifics to Morro Bay? How do we look at native trees here? How do we understand the historic landscape of Morro Bay? Can you give us just a two-minute summary?
Well, certainly, Morro Bay is not really a forest ecosystem. So oftentimes, people suggest native trees, but the palette of actual native to Morro Bay trees is pretty restricted. Certainly, we have California Sycamore, the black cottonwood, wax myrtle along the Troy Creek. We all think of coast live oak. There are some bay trees in immediate vicinity of Morro Bay. White alder, red alder has been planted at campground in Morro Bay. But I think the overall perspective is the native plant palette in terms of trees is pretty restricted.
Could you explain a little, what you would call the historic landscape in Morro Bay?
Well, yeah, I think that's the windows of Monterey cypress are, you know, remain a historic marker of Morro Bay and part of sort of the coastal country landscape. And those should be protected and preserved, and, you know, they're appropriate in large, open parklands. um, you know, they're appropriate in large, open parklands, um, they're, they're not a very successful street tree because of surface roots. Um, Monterey Pine has been planted, um, all over Morro Bay, um, you know, and is, has an issue with blight at this point. There is some Torii pine, um, which isn't, um, blight susceptible, um, that had been planted in Morro Bay. But, uh, so I think, uh, um, the old country historic landscape is, is all about protecting those, um, scenic, uh, cypress, um, and the use of the trees, uh, for, um, nesting birds is, you know, critical, um, on the bayfront, and, um, so maintaining and, and replacing, uh, those trees for, for nesting is, is important.
John, thanks, um, Hope, I wonder if you could add a couple of words, um, if we're looking at non-natives, how do you make a case for them?
Um, I, I think there is a hu- like, a huge want for, over the years, what I've seen in the nursery, is a huge want for plants that do well here, that, that can acclimate to our area and still feed the birds, add a home to them, and so there's, there's a lot of plants from Australia, from South Africa, that can, can qualify as feeding the birds and adding to those features, and giving us beautiful trees and flower. I think there, I think that our, um, you know, our wind is different, like, than Santa Barbara, we don't get the heat, we get the salt there. There are so many different things that, that ruin other trees for our area, that, uh, some of those other areas in the world that have harsh conditions as well bring into this, you know, beautification, and maybe adding those, and you're still feeding the birds, you're still, you're not ruining habitat, you're actually making it better.
Nice.
Yeah.
So Mike, uh, do you want to add in here and kind of give us, uh, your perspective? Uh, is there anything that we can do to support the native plant communities in Morro Bay as we begin to consider plant types and a planting palette? Anything you would recommend or advise?
I certainly think that if you identify areas that are, um, reasonably untouched by previous human development, that those areas could and should be preserved, and, um, they may be well-suited for native plants. Or if there's nothing at all native about Morro Bay Boulevard and Main Street, uh, that ship has sailed. Um, and I think that, pretty much like Hope is saying, that, um, what we need are plants that are street tough and, um, attractive, and part of that can be seen by trees within Morro Bay and close by communities that are already successful, um, and looking for others that would be similar to them. Um, it doesn't rule out, uh, native plants because they're native here, and I think some would certainly do quite well. I think that Coast Live Oak, um, has proven to be a good tree in, um, in some parking lot areas and such, where it has enough root room, uh, to grow. Um, several of the other ones that, uh, John spoke about, um, may or may not be of interest in, uh, street trees as much as they would be in more natural areas. Um, so I think that we kind of need to look at what size of a scope we're looking at with this process. Um, the, um, parks would certainly be different than street trees, I mean, there is some connection to an original soil there somewhere, even if there'd been buildings on the site, or it'd been, uh, razed, and, um, there's at least some connection to soil, um, that might be, um, more useful for plants, so I think that that's different than parking lot trees and sidewalk trees. Um, and then if you have areas that are within the city limits, and I, I'm not familiar with, uh, the natural areas within the city limits, as some of y'all may be, um, but those would certainly require a level of protection and encouragement.
Thank you, Mike. Um, Hope, how could you kind of give us some direction? The effort that I think the commission is looking to do is to build a little excitement about what we can do with plantings in our city, how to be thoughtful, sustainable, um, responsible. Um, and we're looking, is it reasonable to think of, uh, you know, recommendations on street trees, but also maybe recommendations on neighborhood plantings? Uh, not a requirement, but maybe a, a consideration? Do you have any thoughts on that?
Um, yeah, and, and one of the things is that Morro Bay has diverse soils, so you have sandy soils in some area, you have very dry up on, on, uh, Black Hill area, you have, uh, the cloisters that is basically a bog, and so you're, you know, a lot of places make one list, and it's these trees. I think looking at, you know, you're going to have lists for dry soils, wet soils, um, because you, you have this huge diverse sandy soils, the hard-packed clay, so looking at, uh, different trees for different areas, whether, you know, are you doing neighborhoods, where these neighborhoods, these trees are going to grow great, um, and then, you know, trying to get in there the color, people want trees with color, tree, you know, so you have all these different, you want just green trees, but, or trees that produce berries. So for the street trees, you're not going to want to have berries, but you might want to have pollinating for the butterflies and the bees. So all these different things, so the list, I think, you know, it's coming up with a really good list, that, uh, does it help the monarchs, does it help the bees? And then, does it, you know, create shade? So there's so many different factors, and, and having people create a list that is, is, fits everything for every area.
Nice, so that's a great transition. Um, I wanted to ask John, uh, John was nice enough to send us a, a list of, of trees. Um, Scott, is there any chance we can put that up on the screen? And then, I, I'm wondering, John, would you speak to your list and give us a little idea of...
Um, yeah, I have it up live, so I could share the screen.
Can you? Okay.
Yeah.
Do you want to tell us what we're looking at?
Well, I, uh, there's, there's two lists here, one is, uh, trees that are actually native to Morro Bay, um, and the other is trees that are often slammed in, because they're California native trees, and so they're selected when the, our requirement is to plant natives, um, and I have referred to some of them, um, um, I will call your attention to, um, Island Oak, which, you know, um, that's Quercus tomentella, um, from the Channel Islands, and is used extensively in the city of San Luis Obispo as a more appropriate oak street tree than the live oak. So it's similar in, um, appearance to, uh, the live oak, but it's, uh, a, a much better behaved tree as a street tree.
There was one cut down in front of the pub- public library in Morro Bay when they did their new front expansion with the interior renovations. I think there's one...
And the Morro Bay, uh, library also has cork oaks, um, which, you know, of course, are not native to California at all, but are, is a, a really successful street oak tree, and, and, you know, because it's cork, it's, it's interesting in a wine-growing region. Um, so that, th- those can be seen at the Morro Bay library, um, there's some planted at the Ralph supermarket in Los Osos, um, they're a, much more of a standard tree than, than, uh, live oaks.
Could I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Just noticing that, um, like, the California Sycamore and the Black Cottonwood are, well, a number of them up there on that top list are associated with wetlands. Seems like we would want to avoid those, since we're not likely to be moving out of significant drought anytime soon, and, and I'm assuming if they're associated with wetlands, then they would be a thirsty tree, the kind of tree that would be sucking, um, groundwater out. Is that true, or not?
Um, I, I, in urban runoff would likely sustain, um, many of those trees, um, there are specimens, sycamores planted around Morro Bay and Los Osos that, uh, seemingly, uh, are quite happy, um, in urban, uh, areas, um, from probably road runoff.
Thanks, that's actually a good point, and maybe a good way to utilize some of that runoff, because if it goes into a tree, then that's helpful, it's contributing to clean air and so on, so, all right, thank you, sorry to interrupt.
I mean, one of the remarkable, um, tree-like, uh, plantings are the islay that are fringe the, uh, freeway, um, at your forty-one intersection, um, and I think those are variety lioni, those are not actually, uh, the native islay form, um, but it's, you know, it's a small tree, um, evergreen, and can be attractive, um, casts lots of fruit in the, um, fall.
One of the things that I've been aware of with the wetland trees is that they do very well in compacted urban soils, um, they don't require as much drainage, because they have been growing in, in wet lands where the water fills most of the spor- the poor spaces within the soil. Um, so even something that I was familiar with growing up in Florida, the bald cypress tree turns out to be a, a, a great street tree, even in places like Oklahoma City, simply because Oklahoma has clay soils and compacted soils, and that tree adapted rather well. So simply because they, we see them as a water-loving plant, doesn't mean they may not make a good, um, urban tree, depending a little bit on the soil type, but also because if the soils are degraded and compacted, uh, from street building or sidewalk building, that, that may be a, a useful choice.
You know, the Red River Gum, the Australian red eucalyptus, um, um, is a major street tree in much of Morro Bay, and, um, it's pretty unique, um, you know, because it doesn't, um, survive, or isn't, isn't as attractive in, in farther inland, so, um, it's kind of a signature tree for the urban strip in, in Morro Bay, and, uh, I understand it heaves sidewalks a little bit, but, um, I've also noticed as you go out Main Street, they've, uh, moved, they've still planted the Red River Gum, but they've moved it from boxes to, uh, easement strip, and, um, it's probably m- much more successful there. It is, um, you know, has a wonderful color in the fall, um, when much of California is kind of dull, dried up.
So, uh, John, I don't see the black walnut on your list, and yet I think you mentioned to me, um, a, a beautiful tree by Questa College?
Yeah, I called it just walnut, uh, jugland's hindsy eye is the native California walnut, and...
Oh, I see.
There's a aisle, um, behind Questa College, behind the old airfield, um, you know, that is where they have walnuts lining either side of the, um, roadway there, that is truly gorgeous, because, you know, those color to yellow in the fall, um, and that's, that's an entirely native, um, uh, tree, and native to, um, the city itself.
Nice, and if anybody who has a question, or, or Mike, please comment, um, anybody's invited to talk, and commissioners, I think if you want to add in, please do, and staff. Mike, what were you going to say? Sorry to interrupt.
I would think that if the city finds the, uh, fruit drop of the red gum, uh, acceptable, um, and certainly they, it can appear to be like big marbles to me, um, that they might be able to deal with the fruit drop on the walnut as well. Um, so it's, it's, um, I think it's different for street trees than it is for where there's pedestrians involved, as it is for, uh, byways that would line roadways. Um, you know, if you're, you know, sycamores are a wonderful tree that have survived in dense soil places, in parking lots and, um, street sides, and sycamores drop leaves the size of, uh, paper plates and fruit, and can be messy, and it just depends, again, um, I think that the three of us could, um, look at, um, John's list and add other plants that are, if you wish, beyond the native scope, um, that would all grow well here, but part of it needs to be also looked at from a city, uh, park and street maintenance outlook that, um, those of us that are just interested in the beauty of trees may overlook.
And the Malalucas are great street trees, they're, they're, and there's also that drought tolerant, um, and, yeah, Malalucas that are very drought tolerant, and that will also just suck up water, they're, the Malalucas are, I believe, what's planted in the middle of Atascadero Lake, that just basically swim all day long. So, but yeah, I think there's, I, there's so many trees out there, it's unbelievable, I'm sure there's, you know, there's a list that, that we could compile.
And just, uh, Hope, while you're talking, the availability, I mean, how do you, does a, does a nursery begin to cultivate, um, a crop of, let's say, selected trees? Is that the way this would be done?
Um, so, I, no. Um, so I would look to suppliers that, and we have, um, over the last forty-five years, we've made many friends that supply plants, um, the, the Protea growers, the, uh, that's what I call them, the Protea growers, the people who are growing Proteas, and all the new Gravillias, and all the plants from South Africa that are coming in, um, all, there's so many new, uh, um, plants that are coming in in the next few years, and, uh, so I would look to them to find out the availabilities of plants, and there are liner growers, there are, you know, where you can buy small plants, grow them on, but I would say the availability probably from other growers is going to be the easiest way to secure trees and find out what's, what's growing out there.
Nice. Commissioners, question, Susan, do you have, uh, other things you want to introduce and ask, uh, ask our guests?
And this may not even be in their purview, but, um, I know on a lot of our, um, especially private property tree issues and concerns, when somebody's doing redevelopment and removes a tree, there's often a requirement that they plant at a two-to-one or even higher ratio. Um, what I've kind of seen and wondered about with some of these projects, especially if they're taking trees out because they're expanding, that you're asking them to put additional trees in a smaller area, and so, so you have trees competing for, you know, the, the nutrients and the soil, and, and the water and so on, and whether it would make more sense to suggest they either re- replace the tree, you know, on a one-to-one, but then have them plant or offer a tree to a city open space, you know, whether one of our parks, or even, you know, a parking lot somewhere that needs some shade, or, um, someplace where a tree could survive well, rather than densely impact... survive well, rather than densely impacting, trying to create an urban forest where one wasn't meant to exist. So does that make any sense, or am I creating something that isn't real?
I think that makes a huge amount of sense.
Huge amount of sense.
I mean, trees need space and identifying open space and the existing urban forests, it seems like a task. I think of the slope above the Embarcadero, you know, has a scattering of blue gum eucalyptus and not much other variety in there, and that's a wooded area that could be improved with, with selection and, so.
Have you found that the eucalyptus, and again, this could be an urban legend or not, but my understanding was that they can create a somewhat hostile environment to other trees in terms of both their canopy and shading other trees, but also that they create a very acidic soil that can make it hard for other trees to thrive? Is that true or?
Mike, you want to respond to that? I consider it mostly an urban legend, you know, probably in growing native plants, establishing plants under Monterey cypress is more difficult than under open shade of eucalyptus. There's a lot of litter fall in the eucalyptus, but
And I think the litter fall is alkaline.
Okay.
And not actually, not actually, yeah, it's, I think it's alkaline. And they, the roots do take up moisture, so you, so they're going to go to where you're feeding, so a lot of people that would try to plant lawns next to a eucalyptus, those roots are going to come in and they're going to suck up the water and suck up the food, so you end up with these patches of just heavy roots. If you're using drought tolerant plants under eucalyptus usually, or things that can take alkaline soil, a lot of your, your Australian natives, like Korea, different, I won't go into names, but those plants will actually do really well and look great. So I think it's just picking the right plants, you can't put azaleas and camellias underneath eucalyptus.
Okay.
Jen, do you have any questions for, for our guests?
Well, I want to thank all of you for being here, this is awesome. I don't really have any questions regarding trees, but I do have a question about the ice plant that takes over everything, it seems like, in Morro Bay, and I'm just curious your thoughts on that and how, I mean, it's, I'm not an expert in, by any means, and so, but just my thoughts on it is that they basically take out all the natural chaffarell or whatever is in its path, it kind of takes over. So what are your thoughts on the ice plant situation in Morro Bay, and what can we do as a city to keep that under control? And, yeah, so I, I don't know that it's a, there's a few questions in there, I guess. Anybody want to?
I mean, I think cutting it back and making sure that you're, you know, you're, you're keeping an eye on it, because it will take over. That, I think, if, I believe that's native to South Africa and the gazelles and the different animals eat it, and so it's eaten back, where we don't have the deer population that we need to be, to eating that, there's, there's, the animals, you know, maybe the rats enjoy it, but there's not the animals that we need to keep that in check, so then it becomes human, cutting it back and making sure that it's kept in its place, because it does just grow and grow and grow.
Joe, would you like to ask our guests any questions? Do you have some thoughts?
Well, I'm, I'm just grateful for you people appearing, because I regard you as really champions of trees, and we need to hear about sort of championing the continued existence of trees in our community. You know, I, I don't really have a question, all I can say is, you know, I'm mourned every time I see a big old tree has come down because it's allegedly diseased, and I'm always, I'm always thinking of the sort of the political issues associated with, one, how do you, how do you obligate people to replace those trees, and how do you incentivize people to plant more trees, particularly not so much in the commercial areas, the traffic, traffic areas, but in the residential areas? Because, you know, if you, if you look at northern Morro Bay as opposed to southern Morro Bay, the northern Morro Bay seems, you know, largely devoid of trees, and, and the trees that we have in the southern area, you know, their numbers are decreasing, and I, I think we, we really, we have to hear from folks like you as to what can be planted, and then we have to really generate some public outcry to sort of do something to reverse that trend. And, and I, you know, and I, and I think the codes as they stand now and the trees that you can select from, you know, they're, they're convenient trees, and they, you know, they're, they're guaranteed to sort of occupy some space in your front yard and not intrude with your view and, you know, not likely to call down the anger of some neighbor who doesn't want his view blocked by a tree growing over years, but we got to get beyond that, we got to do something to restore what, what urban trees can really do.
So, so Mike, I saw you shaking your head, do you have anything to add to what Joe just said?
Well, I think that the, the city may have more direct influence over the business districts, and the space devoted to homeowners is far, far greater than there is in the business district. So if you wish to make an impact in the canopy that is within the city limits, I like that Joe said to incentivize homeowners to plant trees. And I think part of that would be able to give them some sort of a rebate on the purchase of a tree, where through tax incentives or some foundation that might be able to be helpful, might be able to allow people to plant trees that would be from a list that the commission worked out to allow them the excitement to try a new tree. And not every tree is a great tree for your yard. I've oftentimes recommended people for a flowering tree, which is beautiful to see in flower, but drops a lot of flowers after it's in bloom, which sometimes can become kind of slippery because they are full of liquid and sugars, that that's a wonderful Arbor Day gift for your neighbor across the street, where you get to see the pretty, the pretty flowers, but you don't have to deal with the fallout from the tree. So I think that finding a place to put some trees is important, some of them may be much more appropriate for parklands, for road easements that are not populated, in embankments like John was talking about, that are really steep and wouldn't be built on, that have a chance to have a more of a display aspect to it because they're on a bank. So I think there's all kinds of ways that we can work with it. There's a group called Tree City USA that cities can apply to become members of, and that requires certain levels of sophistication with their tree. You need a tree ordinance, and you need to have an inventory, you need to have a, I think, an arborist on staff or something, I don't know all the purviews, I'm not a member of that group, but it's something that perhaps that
Mike, I think Morro Bay is a member of that group.
Already?
Sure, yeah.
Well, it would be fun to lean on them a bit and to see what more we can wring out of them, because I think that part of it, then, if there's an inventory, this, this, the few of us that are here tonight could look at that inventory and pretty quickly make some ideas about what's doing well and what isn't, and I'm sure the people that took the inventory or are maintaining them now for the city, under the trees that are their purview, certainly have some points of view of some trees that have been successful and some that they'd rather not have to deal with.
So let me just take that one more step further. Mike, you're saying that you almost start with the inventory before you go much further?
Well, it wouldn't be a bad thing, and, and, and the inventory may already exist, and I don't need to reinvent the wheel here, there may be some part of city management or city work that is already doing some of this.
So Scott, you have anything to say on that?
When the, I think when we, you know, went through the Urban Forest Management Plan process, we did do an inventory of some trees in the city, I have to go back and look through it, I haven't looked at it recently, but there was an inventory of, you know, some of the more prominent trees in town. I don't know that it goes much further than that, we do have a tree ordinance as well in the city, and then we have the, the street tree list that we have that I think is a little long in the tooth and could use some updating, or at least having us take a fresh look at it, I think this is, this conversation is helpful to that end, for sure, and certainly appreciate all of you being willing to take some time out this evening to provide this question and answer session, it's fantastic.
I was going to say, I don't know if, you know, Mike, there's the Cal Poly unit up there that grows trees, grows different plants throughout the community, we've bought from them for many years, and I know that the junior high grows a lot of native things, and may be coming up with a way to supply plants through, you know, all three. So, throw that out.
I know, I know who to approach to see if something like that could be useful. I think that some of the group there, Cal Poly's working with the city of San Luis Obispo now with their trees, certainly pushing to try and see to get new trees in San Luis Obispo. I like Susan's idea of if you have to replace, if you take down a tree for development and need to replace it with two or three, that it makes just a whole lot of sense that why have less space to grow additional trees? That just doesn't work, so why, why don't we start a tree credit or a tree bank where there is room then for people that owe the city a tree, and that when somebody needs to plant a tree, they can withdraw from the tree bank? So I think that if we can create some enthusiasm around new trees, find places that suit Scott's staff for places, they know where there are tree holes for the inventory, we've all seen sidewalks with dirt squares in them where there had been a tree, so there's certainly ones that can clearly be the low fruit to be planted right away. So I think if we can get some enthusiasm that way, review the Tree City information, and then reach out for areas that we think are places to embellish with native plants and some of the new things that Hope has mentioned, and I know that the gang at Cal Poly is trying some new materials. So I think that there's possibility to get some new stuff going on, it's just that we need to do a plan, and I don't know if this is the group, or Scott has another gang of people that are already working with that kind of stuff.
What do you think, Scott?
I think we're starting to have the conversation anew now, which, again, from a, from a timing standpoint, is good, I think, you know, we've done work in the past, building from that is, is great. The concept of the tree bank is actually the city's draft general plan, it's going through council adoption right now, has an implementation action to develop that tree bank, because, you know, it went through review by the planning commission, and the planning commission, as Commissioner Chair Stewart said, was like, it would be great if we could do these things, because we see issues come up when trees are removed, and it doesn't make a lot of sense to replace them in a small footprint, makes a lot more sense potentially to replace them around town in areas that we could identify as part of this tree bank process. So, so certainly, that's a viable and, it's a viable program to set up, I think, and one that we've been discussing for a little while now, so, yeah, I think it's a good idea.
If, if I could throw this question out to the group, Morro Bay is a city that really, I think, prides itself on its history, and the history, not just, we love it, we love the way it looks. How do we talk about the history of our planting? Is that a difficult thing to define?
I would say yes, because I, like, every picture that I see of the old Morro Bay doesn't have a lot of trees in it. So it's, I mean, maybe the golf course area, but that was about it, like, all the others just estuary, clean, you know, shots, so it's, and even if you look 1950 pictures, there's not a lot of trees in those pictures.
Our history doesn't have to go back to native, I'm thinking just in terms of 50 years ago, for example.
Right.
You know, Bill, I, I do think in terms of some of those original street trees, like in the downtown area, even up on Black Hill, a lot of trees were planted in those early years of pre-city incorporation because it was so windblown, and, and so the trees were a way of holding the soil in and keeping the dirt out of people's houses, and then there were a lot of excess trees, I think, that were planted up on Black Hill, that, you know, they'd sort of gotten all these trees thinking, well, they might be good for the railroad that didn't come through, or they might be good for house building, and, and of course, the eucalyptus were not great for that initially, and I think even the Monterey kinds kind of, they weren't a great construction tree, but they, they were part of that urban history, that urbanization history, and, and I do think we need to embrace trees as part of a solution to global warming issues, you know, so cleaner air, retaining moisture in the environment, you know, some, some of the kinds of things that if we don't address, we're losing forests everywhere, so anywhere we can add it is going to be a helpful thing for the total environment, I would, I would think.
I think for sure. John, you've been quiet, you want to weigh in here and give us a kind of a couple of final words?
Well, Mark, while you're, you're paying attention to this, and, you know, I would think in terms of planning and parks and your tree bank idea should, should look, also look at the native plant community, which is, you know, coastal sage scrub, and, and look to reinvigorating that. I mean, urban habitats oftentimes run down and sort of need a periodic reconstitution, and I certainly see that in the eucalyptus are reaching the end of their life cycles, and, and so, thinking ahead and planning the next generation's forests is the task at hand.
Nice. Mike, you have a couple of words before we wrap up?
No, I, I think I've been pretty much mouthy as all as I need to be so far, I just think that I'm interested in helping to some extent, depending on how, what's, what's ahead of us, I'm interested to see what would be next.
Oh, it's nice to hear. Hope, could you have the last word for us? You are really a local, so what have you seen in your long time of tree work?
I've seen a little bit of everything that we talked about tonight. I definitely see the issue with having people come in and say, I'm supposed to plant two trees or three trees because I took out one tree, where they don't have the room, or, you know, it's, that kind of defeats the purpose of having a nice tree, because now you're going to have an unhealthy tree. So I think that's great, I love the idea of the, the bank, I think that's a great one, I think that will make people excited, they get to donate, you know, I think those are all great ideas, I think there are so many amazing plants out there that, native and non-native, that I'm sure there can be a, you know, a group, a group chat on that.
So I don't want to ask you all on camera to commit, but we'd love to, I think the commission really enjoyed this, and would love to go further with you three and maybe take it to another step. take it to another step, if you're willing. But thank you very much for tonight. Susan, do we wanna ask, is there any public comment? Is that something we should do?
We could have, if there's any public comment on this, right, Scott?
Yes, we should.
All right, let's see if anybody out there would like to chime in here. Anthony, do we have any public comment in the waiting room?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
And that's out of 300 participants, Susan.
300? Wow, right. You made that up. Okay. I know they're all listening, and they're very excited. All right, then we will close public comment. I'd like to thank you all, Bill, for setting this up, and our panel. Great information. And, you know, we talk about landscaping and trees and issues on pretty much every development project that comes before us. So Public Works, of course, also has their areas that they weigh in on, so I'm hoping that we can keep this in the forefront of the public conversation here. So thank you very much for participating.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I hope everyone watching, you know, we have so many people that tune in and watch us that aren't in the Zoom. So I just wanna remind our panelists here that there are probably a lot of people watching, and I hope that they take some tips from this, especially if they're trying to decide what to do with their own landscape, with their business or their home. So thank you so much for being here.
That's true. All right. So, next up on our agenda is unfinished business. We have none, even though, as I said last time, it's all a lot of unfinished business. I wonder, we could, Scott, you wanna just comment on the status of the general plan? I know the city council had their first meeting of review, and I listened, it sounded like it went pretty well. And you're muted, Scott.
Yeah, yeah, okay, right now. Yeah, no, they, last Tuesday, they started a review of Plan Moro Bay. They got through, I think, a little over a third of it. The review went really well. You know, they came up, I think, you know, one of the issues they wanted me to go do a little bit of work on was the affordable accommodations policy that requires 25% of our waterfront lease sites that have hotel rooms in them to be rented at rates that are affordable, based on our average daily rates. And, yeah, I think the council, you know, in line with requests from our waterfront leaseholder group, you know, we're concerned about what that means, especially in light of some of the policies that require, you know, improvement of potentially raising lease sites up to address global warming and sea level rise, and then saying, we're gonna make you make less money there. There's also the economic impact to the harbor department who operates based on, you know, the tax receipts from that area. They're an enterprise fund, basically, kind of like water and sewer. So, and they said, hey, go see what kind of, you know, commentary you can get out of the coastal commission staff, and, you know, what is their flexibility as it relates to the policy. And I was able to talk with coastal commission staff this week, and there, we worked out that I think we're gonna strike the specific implementation action that says 25%, which I think is great. And we're gonna deal with it more in the zoning code, which is the implementation plan for Plan Moro Bay. But the conversation I had with coastal staff on that issue was really based on how flexible can we be? And they said, you can be really flexible with it. You know, insofar as even clearly delineating that we only have to mitigate for high-priced rooms, not moderate-priced rooms. And so be clear there, and then saying, you know, depending on the size of the rooms, like if you have standard double occupancy rooms, you know, versus a suite where you could have a family in there, well, the suite's potentially, depending on what it rents for, more affordable. And so maybe you don't have to count those in the total room counts. And so they were open to all of those types of things, and then giving credit for public amenities that are on those lease sites, that they're providing, that, you know, that they're expending extra, you know, funds to create that, you know, that don't go into the building, say, necessarily. So we're gonna be working with coastal staff as we bring forward the zoning code piece to the planning commission. We've made changes to that as well, that's gonna make it look entirely different from the last time that some of you have seen it anyway. Because in talking with coastal staff, they agreed that we could pull the implementation plan out and make it a separate chapter of the zoning code, as opposed to having the entire zoning code be the implementation plan, which is the way that it is today. That provides a lot of future flexibility for the city in doing that. So, so anyway, that was it. That was a really good outcome of that, and we'll be, we will be reporting that back to the city council at the next city council meeting, which is next Tuesday. So.
Thank you.
That was pretty positive.
That's actually really great news.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. Onto planning commissioner comments and future agenda items. Anybody have anything they wanna bring up? Bill, have you got something?
I do. Scott, I wonder if, and Joe, we started the subcommittee on the development process this week, and one of the things that I would like to suggest is an agenda item on every meeting, where we have the opportunity to sort of say, what's the update, what's been going on, what's been discussed. Basically, report back from the subcommittee to the commission. Scott, are you comfortable with that idea?
No, I think it's, I think it's good. I think, I think that's a great idea, and I definitely support that, assuming, you know, at least a couple of other commissioners support it. A standing item on the agenda, so the committee can report back, so the commission itself is up to date with where we're at and what we're doing, I think is, I think it's gonna be critical, because you're gonna be reviewing some of the stuff as it comes forward to you, you know, and our process, the end of that often ends, you know, well, at least a portion of it ends up in front of the commission, so, which is why I asked two of the members to become a subcommittee member to help me. So I would, I definitely support that.
Nice.
Would that come under, just to be its own item, or unfinished business that we would just keep referring back to, or?
I might put it under unfinished business, since we never have anything there. I could put it under, you know, new business, but we'll be doing it for a while, so maybe it makes more sense to put it under unfinished, and that'll just be a regular report for me, or from the committee itself, to you.
Yeah. Not worry, we should list it, right? So everybody knows.
Yeah, no, we'll list it, it'll be a recurring item until we're done.
Yeah, sounds good. Jen, you see your hand?
I was just going to say, I would, I'm glad that, Bill, that you brought that up, because I would appreciate getting that report during our meetings, you know, the more information, the better.
Right.
It's, it also provides the opportunity for folks that are out there paying attention to what we're doing, because they're aware that we're supposed to be picking this up and carrying it forward, and it gives an opportunity for us to check in on that, and then we can, if people are interested and show up to those things, they could potentially, you know, hop on and ask questions too. So I think it affords multiple opportunities, not just to keep the commission informed, but, you know, can assist the public in where we stand with that, with that update, with that effort, so.
I think that's true, yeah.
Yeah.
Joe?
I think it's a really good suggestion, Bill. I mean, it's just from a public relations standpoint to sort of get out the message of some of the challenges that the community development office faces, and so that, you know, some of these criticisms can actually be answered in some kind of, you know, rational, intelligent way. Yeah, no, I think it's a good idea.
Excellent. Did anybody else have a chance to read Sean Green's email from earlier today? So maybe we can address it next time, but one of the things he was talking about is looking at the varieties of larger projects, and he's mentioned this to us before in public comment, coming up with a master list of public benefits. So when we condition a project, okay, we're gonna let you go bigger, better, higher, lower, whatever, than normal, that we have some general idea of what kinds of relevant public benefits we might ask them to provide. And he has, you know, a pretty good list of ideas himself. Some of them may be more or less relevant depending on the project, but it's an interesting idea to look at. It could even tie into the idea of city trees and street trees, and, you know, that maybe they contribute to a tree bank, or they, I know there are often public works requirements that they put in sidewalk, you know, in certain areas, so that's a public benefit. So I don't know if that's something we might wanna pull another little subcommittee together to look at that, if anybody else is interested in addressing that. I know, you know, in terms of putting it on as an agenda item, that might be down the road a bit, but it also might help, like, with what Bill did, to get a group working on it outside of staff hours and time, and if anybody's interested on the commission in looking at that. So, Jen, I see you nodding.
Yeah.
Tag your it. Joe? Okay.
A quick thing, Susan, is, this is something that a lot of cities have done. So I don't know how we could research that. Scott, any idea? Is that a hard thing to do?
So, so I will say this, having a subcommittee of the planning commission sit down and discuss at least preliminarily what this might look like, so you could put together a request to the council, because you have to make the request to the council to really, to really work on that. That would be something, you know, that could be something that you could do. You can't, so here's the issue, in the planning commissioner guidelines, and it's the same for all advisory boards, you can't commit, you know, I can't commit staff, you can't commit staff, to, you know, really providing more than an hour or two of staff time, you know, based on requests for us to answer informational things, that type of thing with the commission, and Commissioner Oshin, that would be a much more time-consuming effort. Certainly, there's resources that are out there that the city doesn't have to employ to do some of those things. So, you know, if we could get the blessing of council to move that forward a little bit, then we could do some of that research, and I probably could tap Cal Poly on the shoulder for some of the, for things like that. As well as for things like the, you know, the, you know, the, some of the, to lead forward with, like, some of the tree efforts that we might stem from tonight's meeting as well. Those are, when we get a little bit further down the road, and it requires myself or staff to do work, then we really are required to go, councils is something that it's okay that we work on. I would have to give them an estimate of the time, you know, the time staff would probably have to spend on it, and we would move that forward. Sort of unlike, you know, what the council's already allocated us to do, and we have a subcommittee right now looking at the, you know, the permit process for the city, that's something the council's told us to go do. So, so we're doing that.
Would anybody be interested in, well, let me just say this, I know since that email came in this afternoon, maybe it was this morning, but I looked at it in the afternoon, you know, maybe people could review that. I think everybody on the commission got it, and we can bring it up again at the next meeting and see if anybody's interested in working on a subcommittee just to get an initial proposal about it together. Is that okay?
I think that's a good idea, Susan, because it's kind of a complex issue.
Yes, very much so. And, you know, if you've had some experience with it, Bill, it'd be great to hear your input on that, too. Okay, any other comments or future agenda items, suggestions? All right, then, Scott, Community Development Director comments.
I don't really have anything. I was gonna give you a brief update, but you already asked about it for where the council was at, so I will, oh, I do have something to add to that, I guess. So the plan is for the council to review it over three meetings. The next meeting, we'll be presenting the EIR, so we'll have Chris Brucebach from RINCON doing that presentation in the beginning of the meeting. We've allocated a maximum of two hours at each meeting for the council to review it, because they do have other work they have to do. I don't wanna monopolize their day and, you know, have them be unhappy with me, so we've come up with that. So I anticipate them, you know, completing their review on the 25th of this month. So that's kind of what we're scheduled, you know, scheduled looks like, and, I mean, based on how they went in that first meeting, I would imagine it probably will fall somewhere in that neighborhood. It went pretty, pretty well, I think, in that, in that first meeting, so.
Great, excellent. All right, well, then, if there is nothing else, we will adjourn the meeting to our next scheduled meeting on May 18th at 6 o'clock via Zoom. And that's it. Have a great night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Eleanor.
Thank you.